So which alternate voted last time? Does anyone remember?
Yeah, it was passed.
Alright.
So with the whole business, Mr. Harmon?
We left here with three conditions. I think the motion was four conditions, but I believe there were only three. And we came up with three. One was the trucking you were just talking about.
Yes.
You were main trucking on Saturdays, June, July, and August. That's on the plan. We allow fuel storage on the site, up to 500 gallons in compliance with DEP regulations. And the other one changed the dates on the allowable crushing from the original plan. And those are all on the plan. I think we were approved of those conditions. What we're doing is looking for signatures so we could get this recorded at the registry.
So those four things are all highlighted on this plan.
Three things.
Three. Operations on Saturdays, seven to twelve during the summer, just for maintenance. And no Saturday. Trucking is allowed from Memorial to Labor Day. Crushing is not allowed from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And up to 500 gallons of equipment. Uh, 500 gallons. Right. So that's four. And they're all there. I know normally you haven't. I don't think you've been through this, Chris.
No, not yet.
Normally what happens is you would read each line.
Okay.
And usually under the advice of the code enforcement. We check off whatever applies to each box, whether it applies to it or it doesn't apply to it. Isn't that about right, Gavin? Did I explain it alright?
Yep.
Alright. Start with the Shoreland District.
Well, some of it is, uh, the property is...
It shows that the lower portion of the property is within the 250-foot buffer of the Shoreland Zone. Has that been deleted on, has that been delineated on-site? That 250-foot barrier?
I believe we have flagged it. I can't say that for sure. We certainly would. It's something we would do. But it's been, we haven't been back there on that site since the last approval.
Sure. We'll, we'll need to go out just to verify that. So if you can set up a, a meeting for, for myself and, and someone from Mr. McCoy to go out and just to verify that that's been delineated and that the operation's gonna be out of that zone.
Yeah. So we can do, what I can do is set you up with he and one of the guides, the survey crew, in case some of the stuff is missing, we can put it right back in with the GPS.
Perfect.
Yeah, normally we have that all ribboned off, flagged off.
Yeah. We have not been back in here since the last approval. We've gone back in and checked the grades, but we have not done any more flagging since the last approval.
We almost always do a sit walk for conditional use and that's one of the things we usually like to see.
Yeah, we, we...
Is delineation of zones at that time, but we didn't do a sit walk since we've already been out there a couple times.
Right.
Kinda recently, I mean, I...
Yeah, right. That's exactly. We wanna see the flags and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's one of the things of the sit walk.
Mike can do it.
Yep.
Sure. So I would say that would unreasonably alter the natural flow of storage capacity of any water body. That would be the fourth one down, right? And the conditions of permit?
Then go to, go to the next one. Conditional use permit, existing conditional use of structure.
Mike, you, Chris, you wanna move that? Mike, look closer to you. You're very hard to hear.
Yeah. Then we'll go to conditional use of existing conditional use or structure. If the use has existed prior to the effective date of the ordinance.
Right. I think all that, the use has been there for forty years anyway.
Long time.
Whenever midway started it.
Right. It would be... The original subdivision plan was a long time ago.
So we don't need to do...
That would be the top. The proposed use does not change the original use?
Yeah.
The application procedure, signed application has been submitted. And it's presented in approval.
If you want, just have us skip to the next page. Any questions?
On the third page? Okay. So yeah, we have to do a procedure and public hearing. They didn't, they didn't have a public hearing though.
No, but, uh...
Okay. So...
It'd be the procedure and public hearing.
Do you use, I'm not having adverse impact of spawning grounds of fish, aquatic-like birds, or wildlife habitat?
Yes, it will not.
Correct.
Is there shoreline cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies?
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll have the Shoreland Zone delineated. Would be a good little note to put with that one.
Is this consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Yes.
The site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard and protection regulations?
Yes. You missed traffic access.
Oh, sorry. Traffic, traffic access to the site meets standards contained in ordinance and traffic congestion has been addressed in ordinance with performance standards in this ordinance.
Yes. I remember last time we had put up a trucks entering sign on each road and I think it's still there.
We actually moved that. Remember we moved the driveway?
Yeah, and you moved the driveway too. Yeah, the sign and you moved the driveway. That's right.
So F would be adequate provision for disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made?
NA. Non-applicable. It's just a gravel pit.
With that, Mike, normally we do, um, we require these places to have a...
Bring a portable toilet?
Portable toilet.
Mm-hmm.
And I think Seth mentioned that when we...
That's...
Yeah. I think you have to anyway.
Yep.
By law.
Adequate provision for transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous waste materials has been made?
Yes.
A stormwater drainage system capable of handling a 25-year storm without adverse impacts or adjacent properties has been designed?
We usually just say yes, that the pit is internally drained so that, you know, stormwater wouldn't be going away from the site, pit site.
Adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made?
There should be a plan.
The revegetation notes should, should cover that.
I believe it does.
It's here on the, it's delineated on that plan.
Okay.
So yes.
There's adequate water supply to meet the demands of proposed use and for fire protection purposes?
NA.
Provisions for buffer strips on and on-site landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and...
That's on the plan too, isn't it?
Yes. Yep. Yes.
They're gonna put at least a temporary berm around the screener and crusher site to reduce noise, isn't that? Yeah.
It's pretty simple. It's typical.
Yeah.
All performance standards in this ordinance are applicable to the proposed use will be met?
Yes.
Archaeological and historical resources designated in the comprehensive plan are protected?
I think that's an NA. Let's see if I find a dinosaur or something up there. Then we'll talk.
We didn't schedule a public hearing.
And again, just be out in public on that. Our ordinance says, says we may schedule a public hearing. And so that's an option. Normally we, we do do that, but we've had them several times before. There was really no reason to... I don't believe any reason to do it this time.
We want to...
Yep.
Then what has made findings of fact regarding applications within 25 days of the hearing? Application was approved with conditions?
Right. Yeah.
I, I think, Chris, I mean, I'm just being a little stickler here, I guess. The, the two on the top, this has been done, but I think at the, at the meeting, we need to state
Right.
That the, the bodies have been notified and the code enforcement officers have been notified and like that, just sort of official, um... Official action, I guess.
Is there gonna be a, is there gonna be a mailing?
Uh, no.
Because we didn't do a hearing, so...
Right.
Okay.
So, alright, the applicant and the bodies have been notified. Five hundred have been notified, have been notified by regular US mail, first-class mail, at least 10 days in advance of the hearing.
And it doesn't apply.
And the code enforcement officer and municipal office have been notified.
And that's just a yes.
Yep.
Sorry, Chris. It's just, it's always somebody watching.
Right. I understand.
Been down on 6636 on number three, the applicant?
The applicant. The code enforcement municipal office have been informed of the decision? Yes. Detail finding facts and conclusions have been prepared?
No, there's a, yeah, haven't they?
What was it?
Finding of facts. That's after this meeting.
It's after this one.
That's the next one. So you'd have to hold off on answering that one. So it'd be at your next scheduled meeting. The finding of facts would be signed.
We wouldn't do that, right, in our, our ball. We got, we wouldn't do both of them tonight.
No, I don't think the finding of facts have been prepared from this meeting, yeah.
I take some...
This, and then we have to do it again?
Yeah.
Two weeks.
Sign the mylar and then the finding of facts will come following.
Alright.
So that, you can leave that blank at this point?
So we don't approve it tonight?
No, you will approve it, but then you have to have the findings of facts saying, stating the approval, a written document of your minutes. And then that will be, that will go into the record and you send the finding of facts on to the applicant as well, so that he has a finalization.
Okay.
And then 6638, conditions attached to conditional use permit may include but are not limited to specifications related to type of vegetation.
Increase setback?
Free setbacks in yards. Sewers disposal and water supply. Facilities. Landscaping and planting screens. Period of operation. Operational controls. Professional inspection and maintenance, serities, deed restrictions, restrictive convenience. Location peers and dogs, parking and signs, type of construction.
And then your performance guarantees, I believe you decided the escrow account?
Yeah. So performance guarantees may be required by the following forms: security bond on the main license, serenity bonding company. Revocable letter of credit from main license institution, escrow accounting cash deposit either with town and escrow or main license bank.
And we, we've been doing the escrow and the escrow amount, I believe, was changed to $1,500 an acre. For 10 acres. And so that'd be a $15,000 escrow account. Bonds and, and things like that historically haven't worked out well. And so that's why we changed it to just a escrow account and then it's, it's there forever.
Yeah, and that's note, under operation notes number one.
I'm sorry, yeah.
That's stated on here, under operation notes number one.
Okay.
Alright. Today, the call for motion to approve the mineral extraction application of the void.
I'll make a motion to approve the travel extraction operation of Seth McCoy.
Uh, second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Now, do you wanna take the mylar and, take the mylar and have him sign off so that he's signed off to take his register notice?
Yes. I know, I know he's quite anxious because he's got financing that depends on having this recorded. Just one correction, okay? The registry no longer takes mylars.
Right.
So all we do is paper now. You won't see it.
You're right, 100%.
Right. And so what we'll do is we'll take this, record it, and then provide plans back to the town.
We just have to sign it, that's all.
Yeah. So if you sign it, we'll get it recorded.
They started about, what, six months ago or something?
Mylar thing.
Yeah.
Everybody was doing it, so they didn't want it.
So I've got a couple plans here. If you wanna, I'll just lay them out here. People come signing. I'll take them with me and get them recorded.
Yeah, the chairman goes off first, I think, and then we gotta go in the same order.
Hi, wow, what's the one?
Oh, that's fine.
That's a mylar one, but it works on paper, so...
Yeah, the reason for the Saturday track is if you go with Dunk, there's half the time people are parked.
They don't put the date on.
No.
Hell, we can...
Right, yeah.
No, I don't really care.
This is jail.
We're down here.
Yeah.
And it backs up.
Yeah.
It's a murder shot. He said it's all, this is the town.
Right.
Traffic, because you don't...
I don't blame you.
Yeah.
I don't blame you. Here we go. Yeah. Sure. Gavin, you wanna write the date on that?
Yep.
It's on the bottom.
24/21.
Finished product, I think. And that's when we were like, yeah.
Yeah. Could be very bad.
Conditions?
You gotta have five, right?
Get on that plan that folks are signing, it's like...
Yeah.
It should be.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's rarely, and I'm sure that you wouldn't intentionally do something like that, but... I think that's the only situation I have with signing plans that's... Or if they brought them in, like in the afternoon, if the code office...
Especially historically.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah.
If you...
Not a huge deal.
If you don't do it.
Yeah.
That's good feedback.
Certainly, every time.
Yeah. I mean, it's, I've never seen anyone intentionally do that, but I've seen...
They can be...
Cross.
You didn't do it for that one, so you can't do it for me.
Sometimes do, like, if the board had added it, it's...
That happens over there.
Yeah, it happens over here too.
Bring them in anyway, right? Exactly.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming in.
We'll be in touch as far as those.
Perfect. Thank you. We get our copy. Do we get a copy?
Yeah.
Yeah. After he calls it, he's gonna drop it off.
Okay.
We get to record a copy.
Move on to new business. Robert and Jennifer Taylor. 800 Lakeside Drive, map 117, lot 028, best practical location. Mr. and Ms. Taylor are applying to demo the first floor of their existing house and are available with a second-floor addition within a 30% expansion allowance.
Not really, but I can...
Where is that again, Chris?
Uh, Lakeside Drive, 800...
I gave everybody's...
You already gave them?
Yeah, to their packet.
Okay. If you, if you look in your packets briefly, you will see that there is an excerpt from the Chapter 1,000, the Shoreland Zoning. I just wanted to review this with the board. You can review in your own leisure, I guess. But the, uh, the major difference, what I've seen a lot of going through some of your permits and your greatest practical extent reviews, is that you have been utilizing the area, floor area, and volume equation for, for the 30% expansion rule. In 2015, in 2015, they, um, updated the Shoreland, Shoreland zoning, or Chapter 1,000, we like to call it. And it references footprint, footprint, footprint. Well, no longer is the area and volume language in the ordinance. So, um, so it guides you to use the footprint, which would be total, total structures on your property footprint for the 30% expansion. So that's something for you to think about as we're moving forward. We only have this one for the greatest practical extent. This, uh, this particular application, uh, the, the biggest, it, it wouldn't alter the footprint, so this wouldn't even be... It's, it's to, it's to be built or projected to be built in the same exact footprint. So in this particular application, it wouldn't be critical that we evaluate that. And, and we've, we can talk about which way we need to move forward with that in the future, but I thought that I'd like to bring that to everybody's attention so that they can read up on it and kinda get a feel for what I was, what I'm mentioning now. This application, as I said, is, isn't, isn't gonna be a large factor for the greatest practical extent. You can see by, by our board here that it is primarily at the greatest practical extent because it barely has setback off from the right-of-way, which we're looking at. There, it says that 20-foot distance from what appears to be the front door stoop to the center of the right-of-way, which is pretty tight. So I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't suggest that they move that dwelling back anymore. With that being said, the other restriction that's gonna come into play with this particular structure will be the height restriction. Anything in the Shoreland Zone is supposed to be restricted. As you'll notice in some of the pages that I gave you folks from the Shoreland Zoning, that there's a height restriction of 25 feet in the 250-foot buffer. This may give some people some heartburn from what has been happening before, but it's in the state, it's in the state guidelines. That's what we need to follow when making these decisions.
Mike, before you move on, we have so many new members here.
Sure.
You know, we have five new members that really haven't been here very long.
Sure.
To understand, you never heard too much about the Chapter 1,000 until Mike brought it up tonight. It has been mentioned from time to time. But we got two, two things that we're required to follow. And how we create our ordinances and all this stuff. And one of them is the Chapter 1,000. Uh, this is put out by the DEP. Then DEP controls all lands, not just in the Shoreland District, but all lands, all air. So this is very important. And the other thing that we have to follow closely with our ordinances, development of ordinances, is a comprehensive plan. Those are the two things that we gotta follow. And that's why this is so important. To make sure we know what's in that Chapter 1,000.
It's a, it's a statewide Shoreland ordinance. It's a generic one. The, the town does have the ability, of course, through home rule, to develop some projected or potential changes. However, when, when you utilize, when you utilize that ability of home rule, it still needs to be submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection for approval. And any changes that may be less stringent than what this Chapter 1,000 reads, you have to, you have to prove that that change would be necessary among your community in order for the DEP to approve that. So it's, uh, it's state mandatory, state mandatory ordinance.
We got a home rule, but the state still controls it.
They, they say that we have to have one, whether it's the Act in Shoreland Zoning ordinance or the Chapter 1,000. Those are your two, two choices. You could, you can actually create an, an Act in specific chapter version of Chapter 1,000, but I just wanted to throw that out there. So Mike, just let me get this straight. What you're saying is what we've been approving with the 30% expansion, the way it's been calculated, is not correct?
I, I, I think there's a few considerations to take into account. The, the local ordinance, uh, does talk about volume, but it, it might be in need of an update to match the current version of, uh, DEP regulations. So I, I don't think there's anything inherently wrong with the, the actions that the board has taken or the approvals granted over the last, you know, how many ever years. But it might be an indication that the local ordinance is ready for a tune-up to come into, you know, closer alignment with the DEP regs.
And that is basically what I've been saying, especially since this... And that, and that is basically what I've been saying, uh, especially since this, the new board, as, as you know, beyond that, we need to work on these things, because everything is not an issue until it's an issue. You know what I mean? And you find out, and this is, uh, why we really need Mike, is because he knows what our issues are, because he has to deal with them every day. And if he says this isn't working, or this isn't right like he did tonight, we're supposed to be doing it this way, it's incumbent on us to work on the changes to bring us into compliance. And you'll see that all the time with this zoning, it, it's just a constant.
It's...
It's a constant.
It's, it's a never-ending evolving document.
Yeah.
Continuously. Some of the, some of the statutes that maybe, that maybe, this is a problem I run into a lot that I haven't actually looked in here, right, typical zoning ordinance. Some of the statutes that are cited in here by, you could have updated this this year. Some of the statutes that are cited in here by fall of the year, in the, in the turn of the next legislature, could be, could be repealed and it's reverted to a totally different section. It happens constantly. It's, it's nothing, it's to nobody's fault, it's just one of those things that you just try to, try to keep up. Try to keep housecleaning.
Constant.
Um, so with, with that being said, I guess I'd like, I'd ask for you to all to try to, in your ti, spare time, try to review the few pages that I gave you. And there's a, there is another where this board is very new. In the town that I came from, we had something that worked very well. I'm not saying that this is something that may work for you folks, but it's food for thought. Um, there is such a provision in this chapter one thousand for you to, for you to employ the code officer as the planning board's designee for greatest practical review extent. It's, it's just a, just a few sections of shawland zoning that you're, that you're constantly dealing with, that you may not go to the sites or do the site walks. I'm not familiar what your process is thoroughly yet, but in the town that I came from, the planning board chose to make me the designee over shawland zoning topics. And I'm not sure, I, I think I, I have to, uh, write to the attorney. I'm not sure if the planning board is allowed to make that decision solely, or if it needs to go in front of the voters. So I'll have a better, I just wanted to kind of let you folks know that that option was out there and it gives you some food for thought. If that's something, obviously, that you don't want to deal with, or, or you don't want to look into, then fine, but at least now you know that it's available to you.
I think it would have to go to town meeting because we'd have to change the verbiage in the zoning ordinance where it indicates planning board will review kind of thing. I mean, it's under, like, probably under relocation and replacement, you know, somewhere in there.
If it's taken from chapter one thousand, verbatim, which I'm, I don't know well enough to know if it has or not, but it says in each, in each instance, it says planning board or its designee. Just silly, if you're to think. Yep, just something for you folks to think about. This is my first, my first, uh, meeting with you folks, and I just, uh, wanted to get some of the things out that I, that I've noticed right away, that may be helpful to us. Hopefully I didn't throw anybody for too big of a loop on this first greatest practical extent here. This, uh, it, to me, this is, this is pretty cut and dry. These folks will actually be required to give an as-built design or replace their septic system, as we have no record of that. Not sure if many people are aware, but it's good to get out there that last year, there was a main state law passed that any real estate transaction within the shawland zone, the septic system needs to be either evaluated or replaced within three hundred and sixty-five days of the sale.
Yeah, I, I remember something we, we...
So that's...
Yeah, we have to do that, but I don't know if we have to do it, or if the banks are saying we have to do that.
I believe it's, it's a, it's a real estate law is, is what it's in, and it's all part of the due diligence for agents.
Yeah, it has to be inspected to make sure it's...
But that's a potential pitfall for a homeowner that, that is in, in a situation where they've worked their entire life and they're gonna buy a beautiful spot on the lake, and now they've spent their nest egg and turned around and they have to replace the septic system immediately. So let's, I, I'd like to get that out there, since you folks have so many miles of shawland. It's important to let, to get that message out there, that this is a variable in this, in a real estate transaction in the shawland zones.
We do have an age thing, all right Gavin?
What'd you say, Dennis?
We have an age thing on the septic system.
Yeah.
It, it, I know it used to be, but eighty-nine or something? Seventy-nine or eighty-nine? If it was, because it was, uh, approved by the state, uh, yeah.
I guess so, it's kind of hard to, I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah. I, I know when I built my place, I had to put a new septic system in because it was too old.
Right. This, this particular system was done in eighty-six, that's why it's gonna be under review. So they could, they can either hire somebody to evaluate it and give us what we call an as-built design with the condition of the system, and, or they can choose to replace the entire system. That's up to the homeowner. That's all I have.
So you, you did note, note that twenty-five feet in height is applicable to this particular best possible location?
Yep.
Yeah, it's in...
Should we just put that in as a condition that they...
It's, it's a standard condition in the chapter one thousand.
Okay.
Yep. It's a standard condition in there, and it's also, that gets a little bit, that gets a little bit tricky and the people get alarmed with that as well, but the, the height measurement is actually taken from the highest adjacent grade, meaning on a lot of these, on a lot of these places, a camp is, is on, is on a hill, so the, the measurement, the height restriction measurement would be taken from the rear or the highest elevation possible to the peak.
Normally closest to the road.
Normally closest to the road, exactly.
So how tall is this structure we're looking at?
This structure we're looking at is roughly twenty-four feet. They're gonna do, they're gonna do a couple of, uh, dormers on there. I don't know if you folks have the blueprints or not, but be more than happy to pass them around. They're gonna do a couple of full dormers with a, with a roof to try to gain some more.
How high is?
And it has a daylight basement on the backside, so on the lakeside of the property, so, um, let's go, I'll just give you two of those elevations.
That's a septic issue, though. We, we haven't, that hasn't been something we've addressed either. I mean, we've asked about the age, I think.
There's, there's something Kenny was talking about, if it was, if it was approved by the state after seventy-nine or eighty-nine.
Yeah, it was...
I'm sorry, I forget. It was a year. If it was all that, then they had to...
And it's going to a three-bedroom, too.
Do something, I don't know.
It's ninety gallons a day per den, per bedroom. It would be two seventy.
Anything could be.
So if they did the, uh...
It's a seven fifty tank, you don't allow those...
Volume thing. Does that decrease their volume by fifty percent?
Yeah, it should be more lax than just the footprint.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Oh, of the camp?
Yeah, that thirty percent is more.
Yeah. I mean, I'm fine with it. My idea is, I did just, I honestly just was reading through this this week, for other reasons. And I see that.
So is there a, a vote that the board needs to take on, on this application tonight?
Yeah, the best practical location.
A motion?
Yes. Best practical location.
What's the restrictions on that one there, Mike?
Uh, they're on it.
No closer, well...
It's no closer, yeah, no closer than that.
Ninety-seven feet, it says.
Okay, so you, you'll wanna do it just to, um, we approve the, um, best practical location, uh, on the existing footprint? Does that make any sense?
Yeah.
I'd, I'd put the ninety-seven feet in there. We always put the distance from the water as one of our, it's like on the, when Christina fills out the form, she has to put that on there.
Why don't you make the motion, Gavin?
I was...
Okay.
Can I hand to Jack for a second?
Yeah, please.
Though it's not time for discussion yet, um, I was actually gonna require, was actually gonna require that they have a plot plan created prior to construction. Delineating the diff, the, the exact distance, like you can see, that's just written on there on your copy.
Right.
I want, I'd be more comfortable if they have an exact distance from a licensed surveyor from their corners of their house to the high watermark. There's also another provision in here that I'm not sure a few folks have been practicing. Um, it, it would be on page five. It's, it says, "An approved plan for expansion on a non-conforming structure must be recorded to the applicant, recorded by the applicant with the registry of deeds within ninety days of approval of its application. The recorded plan must show existing and proposed footprint and the non-conforming structure, the existing and proposed structure height, the footprint of any other structures on the parcel, the shoreline boundary and evidence of approval by municipal review authority." So that means that moving forward, any expansion, any expansion in the shawland zone will require a licensed surveyed plot plan depicting the distance from the high water and all structures on the property, so that that applicant actually will have that copy...
Holy smokes.
...to record it, record at the registry. It's in the rules, it needs to be addressed.
Yeah, we, we often ask for that, but not every time.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, uh...
Should we wait on, so we can get that before we vote on this, or should we just put it as a condition?
You can vote on this, I'm sorry, you can vote on the same, on the same footprint, and then we'll get that information when we require the survey as far as the distance. Like, we can state that it's ninety-seven feet, but if it's ninety-eight and a half...
Okay.
So...
Okay.
Most of them there, since I've been on the board, we, they would say their distances, and quite often Kenny would do the thing on there, and he has a thing on the computer that measures the foot, feet and all that.
Right.
Different places. Uh, and I'm not saying one way's right, one way's wrong. I guess my only issue is, and Gavin, I'm not disagreeing with you, but normally, we accept what's there, and I, I agree with what you're saying, Mike, this is a law, this is a law.
Hmm? Which I remember, um...
If we didn't do it like the last person, do, did, do we need to sit down as the board and, and address this issue moving forward? Or do we, or not? I mean, I don't wanna, I don't know.
No, no, not per se, I just wanted to make sure that I get that out there, that, that, that's gonna be a requirement from the code office. It's nothing necessarily that the planning board needs to address at this point, but that will be part of their application processes that we, once, once we have, uh, once we've talked through the, the plan review portion, and they're all, they're ready to get their permit, then they'll be instructed that they'll need a licensed surveyed plot plan illustrating their proposed expansion in the existing structure and the distances from the high watermark.
But doesn't the planning board need to approve the permit applications?
You need to do the greatest exta, you need to do the greatest practical extent review.
No, I meant like when, when we do applications, like the building permit or whatever, the planning board working, the code usually develops those applications. That's what we've done in the past, Mike, I don't know how that...
No, sure, but you still, you would still have to go downstairs with Kenny and get, and receive their building permit, correct?
Oh, yes.
Right, at that point, that, that's what I'm stating, you're still gonna continue to do your review and your application, but that will be part of my, the building application processes, that I have tho, those materials before I can issue the permit.
And so the planning board should be doing that, then, when they do it, right? So when we do the best practical location, it should be a requirement from the planning board.
I think it should be a requirement before it comes to the planning board, because I don't wanna be reviewing this thing on an inaccurate document. If we're gonna require a certified plot plan for everyone anyway, it should, we should get into the code office so the planning board can review that.
And that all, that all ties into the designee portion. Is that a portion that you, you, the planning board, continue to see yourselves doing, the same thing that you've always done with that? Or are you willing to kind of, or are you willing to let some of that responsibility go and focus on in other directions far as like ordinance review and things like that? Or...
Well, I think for this, for this year, the planning board's gonna be reviewing these things because it's, we're not gonna be able to put, change this thing this year, so, just 'cause of town meeting and everything.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I'd like to see the certified plot plans before we vote on these things.
Yeah, that's pretty fun to vote. That's it.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing.
And we have had problems where they come back and say, actually, you know, we, the plan that you approved was inaccurate and you need to vote again because it's two feet different, and we've had to do that, so...
We had one down on Seventh Street a while.
But that doesn't, you know, that doesn't save us any time. It'd be more efficient if we just got the certified plan first, and then every, the applicant, I mean, I'd also like to see the applicants in here with us, because it, it's very difficult to, we don't have a representative to say, you know, what, where's the topo map on this thing? We're supposed to get the, you know, the two-foot contours on these things, so that we can determine grade, slope. All we have to go from is, is a picture like that, which, you know, pictures can be deceiving.
This shows a power line going over the road.
I think you make a good point, Mike, um, where there's only twenty feet from the center of the road, um, I think it's really important, because oftentimes, these roads aren't in, as Dennis said, aren't, aren't where they are, where they are on paper. I think that's really important, you know, and I think that, you know, from my own experience, they, they did require, um, a survey from a licensed surveyor, a plot plan.
So I think that's a good thing.
It is a good thing.
And I'd also like to find out what they're gonna do with that power line.
And a little, little, you know, the, the more information we have about these things, the easier it's, it is to say, oh, we'd like to see revegetation here or there, you know, because the site looks bare, but it's hard to tell from the inputs we have. I mean, we have, sometimes we come, we get a whole packet for these things and suddenly we get nothing.
And this place has already been added on to, I think?
Deck?
Mike?
Yeah.
This has already had been added on to, I believe.
That's something we look for since nineteen eighty-nine, if they have...
Right, the deck has obviously been replaced.
Mr. Chairman, um, I, I'll chime in, uh, to, to second, uh, Mike's observation that the many communities, even though there's a, there's a chapter one thousand is, is direct from the state, every community has, has a slightly different version, it's, it's their own locally adopted version, and in many communities, probably most communities, uh, certainly every community that I've worked in, in the last few years, has, this is an administrative process. The ordinance is written specifically to say that, uh, these kinds of things, just like any other non-conforming use outside the shoreline zone, is reviewed as, uh, an administrative activity by the code office. That, that's certainly not the way it works, it has worked in Acton, and, and I think that's specifically because of the way the ordinance is written. Uh, the ordinance has, has been written that way, and, and there may have been a reason for that, but I think that, uh, you know, it could be time to have a discussion, and it might be a natural time with a, a new code officer coming bo, on board to think about, uh, what kind of activities need, um, a level of review at, you know, kind of the town office level, and what kind need more of a public process with the planning board. So that's, that, that ties in with another point I was gonna make about, you know, the role of the board and the role of the code officer is, is generally very clear, and, uh, this is one instance where... very clear. And, uh, this is one instance where the, the board is really kinda getting into something that's, uh, a, you know, a, a code officer decision in, in a lot of communities. So, uh, along with, you know, the idea of having a designee for these kinds of things, it saves some board time, probably go a little faster for applicants if they could just work directly with the code officer. Uh, there might be other elements in here, like Mike was saying, uh, about, you know, it might be good to have an update or a discussion, but I'm not sure, like, uh, any of these are gonna get resolved tonight. I think it's more of a, you know, we're looking at the town zoning ordinance. Uh, and that's something that would have to go through more of a, the, the regular process for an update.
So that goes to, kinda, like I've been saying, we need to have some conversations on how we're gonna, what process we're gonna use forward, because very often when people change, think, a lot of things change regardless of what position it is. And we need to have that conversation and, and see what we. I mean, the bottom line is by statute, the planning boards, of course, I do just a board. And they're the ones that do all this stuff. I see every side. And being, I've been doing this for almost 50 years, I understand how it got to where it is.
I agree. It's probably a good time with the, the new CEO to, to consider stuff like that and, um, but, you know, this even goes back to my early comment. I've, I've got some concerns now about consistency and communicating this, these changes out. I mean, it, it seems to me like the, the process and, and even the costs associated with this for the applicants are gonna change.
Considerably.
Um, pretty significantly, yeah. Not that I don't think it should be done. And then if we can't make the change for a year because we get, you know, we can't designate Mike because we gotta get it in the ordinance and that's gonna be a year. We're kind of in a never, never land here for, for some period of time.
And it's not really fair to Mike.
No.
As a, a new code enforcement officer to, because I, I can promise you, if we're doing like, you know, we're saying with a, with a survey and stuff like that, I know it goes with the territory sometimes.
Yeah.
But, uh, somebody like me, uh, could get very, very angry.
Oh.
Uh, because now you're making me do this. And it's easier to me anyway. On Mike, it's the planning board made that decision. And then it's the board that made that decision to have Mike do it.
How did the appeals work in your town, Mike? Did it come to the planning board or to, if somebody disagreed with you?
No, it goes to the Board of Appeals. Yep.
And that's all laid out very clearly, how that works.
Yeah, well, I just.
Sometimes, it depends how, how it's set up. Sometimes, when you, when you appeal the planning board, you go to the zoning Board of Appeals. That's how it works. They, 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 they hear the hearing for the code enforcement, or they hear the, for the planning board. But this town is set up that it goes from Mike to the zoning Board of Appeals to, to Superior Court. And the planning board to Superior Court. The Board of Appeals doesn't hear anything on the planning board. Not in this town.
And that's, that's pretty standard.
Yeah.
Yep.
But the law allows it to both ways if you wanna do it. The zoning board can hear the appeals on the planning board.
Try to table it.
Which I think is very.
Wanna try to table this until we get the survey?
I just wanna protect Mike a little bit here, that's all. I wanna give him a few weeks to get comfortable in his chair before.
Do we get a motion to table this till we get the?
Till we get a survey?
Till the survey comes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, we table, uh, the best practical location for, uh, Robert and Jennifer Taylor, 800 Lakeside Drive.
Wait a second.
Do we want more than just the survey? In other words, you know, what the avenue is talking about?
Revegetation.
About the vegetation.
Well, they shouldn't be changing any of vegetation. That shouldn't be. Because they're not, they're not disturbing any earth.
Correct. Correct.
Something about removing some trees?
Did they say something there?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
No, nothing about removing trees.
No.
Look to the back, behind the window by the door. That's close. Yeah, you gotta tell me they're gonna repel something, I don't know, cut a tree down?
Right.
Oh, those trees are ways.
You think they are?
Yeah, I know they are, because. I know they are. I've, I've worked on that law in the past.
Okay.
And they have had trees moved. And those, those things are.
Farther away than?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd be okay with approving it with conditions that speak to what we just discussed. If we feel like it's, you know, instead of we, you know, having the applicant wait to, but either way, they're gonna have to get the certified plot plan, so.
Yeah, wait one way or another.
Yeah, so.
Like John was saying, it's gonna be more consistent. We should kinda play by the book.
Oh, I agree.
Mike?
When you know you're doing something wrong, you've got your responsibility to fix it.
Right.
And if you've been doing it wrong for 10 years.
You're consistent though.
You're consistent doing it wrong. You're trying to consistently be doing it right.
Well. Ben, is there no way, um, back to this designating, Mike, if we were to decide that would be something administratively helpful, there's no other way to do it besides changing, changing design and ordinance?
Uh, to me, when I, when I'm looking at, at where this is in the ordinance and those kinds of provisions, it's, it's in section one of the zoning ordinance. And I believe that everything uh, in that zoning ordinance would need to go back to a public meeting for, for changes. So, again, I don't wanna, I, I, I think it'd be misleading to have the board think that, you know, we've been doing it wrong, or doing it the way we weren't supposed to. I, I think that if anything, there's something to, to Mike's point about making sure that, uh, the local ordinance matches the, the guidance from the DEP. And uh, it may very well be time or overdue to look at these kinds of submission requirements and, uh, uh, those kinds of things, uh, to make sure that they match. And just based on the wording, maybe it's worth community's discussion about why, why these are coming to the board in the first place. If, if there's a value to the community or uh, there was some idea that, uh, the planning board really should be the authority as opposed to more of an administrative process.
Okay.
Maybe get that sorted out.
I'm gonna say it then. I wasn't going to, but I'm gonna say it. Before Kenny Paul came here, 20 some odd years ago, we had a problem with code enforcement. We went through quite a few code enforcement offices. And there was a lot of underhanded stuff going on. And the planning, this is why when the planning board at the time really got involved in a lot of this stuff, because this is what was happening in the town of Acton. When Kenny Paul came here, that stopped. And, but before that, there was a lot of money putting people's wallets or, or, or turkey for Thanksgiving, or, and stuff like that. And that's why the planning board got so involved in all this stuff. Because, uh, the crookedness that went on in this town. And for years and years, and, and, and Gavin knows this, for years and years, you had like Tom Cashin, you know, great member of the board. He was on here for 20 some odd years. Chip Van Al, uh, there was a lot of people that was on this board for years and years and years. When all the process changed, when the, when the, when the planning board got more involved in all this stuff. And, and it just continued. And honestly, as Gavin will tell you, until a few years ago, a lot of these people were still on the board. I mean, they moved away or whatever, but uh, that's the way the planning board got involved in this stuff to begin with. As detailed as we do.
Sure. And, and, uh, you know, kinda concern would be a perfectly understandable reason to have a more transparent, public kinda process. Uh, and, and if the town decides this is how they wanna continue, I think that, you know, that would be an outcome of a discussion. But, uh, there is an opportunity based on uh, DEP guidance and, uh, experience in other communities to, to have this become more administrative. So, um, there's pluses and minuses. And I think, you know, that there's room within the DEP process to give each community a chance to decide how they wanna do it. I think the, the advantages of having a, a public process, a planning board process is this kind of thing where it's aired in public, it's on TV, that kind of thing. Uh, if, if we were to as a town, consider having, uh, a designee do that, meaning the code enforcement officer, that would probably be a faster, more efficient process for uh, applicants as well as, uh, freeing up some board time, you know, on a pretty regular basis. I, my, my impression is that this is the kind of project that you guys see pretty regularly. So, you know, weighing, weighing that out would be a factor as well.
Yeah, last meeting, there was about five of them or something.
Yeah, wow.
I'm fine with however the board wants to go, I just.
How many people do you have waiting for a permits right now currently?
Uh, there's some incomplete ones, but probably like 10.
Like 10?
Like 10?
10 complete applications.
You know, but you're only talking about shoreline zones, so it's.
Exactly.
You know, so you have that second layer of protection by the DEP when you're making a decision.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Typically. It's a, a lot of times it, it's pretty, pretty cut and dry for me because it's a septic system. A septic system's always a trigger, it seems as though. If it's a replacement system and it's nine out of 10 times, it's, it's, uh, chambers in the driveway. You know, okay, they're at the greatest extent practical, but, but, uh, but there's always, there's always a tricky one in there, you know, there's always, there's always a wrench to.
There's a dentist's lawn everywhere.
So you're following DEP regulations?
Yes, yeah, you follow DEP regulations. It's all pretty.
It's a second layer.
Yep.
Let's move to table this.
Can I have a second? Table it?
A second?
All in favor?
I kinda like the idea just from the time, if it, is it, let me ask this question before we call. Is the result faster if we conditionally approve until they give you the plan? Or, uh, vote to table it?
They, they're gonna, they're gonna have to schedule a survey or anyway before I approve it. I, I probably will work up 95% of the application before I receive the survey, but that will be the.
Finals.
That'll be the final. So, as far as you folks tabling this for, for a time being, I'm still gonna do, I, I'll still act in down and downstairs as though this was approved. So that when we get that, when we get to that point, just say, okay, this does appear that it's the greatest practical extent, then within two days, they'll be able to come get their permit. So I'll do 90% of all the background stuff that I'll need to do as the code officer. It's not gonna hold me up, but the survey itself will likely.
Right, but if we table it, then you have to come back to one of our meetings.
Oops.
Where if we conditionally approve it, given they give you the survey and the numbers all match.
Sounds like I'm gonna be here anyway.
I, I think from, from the applicant's standpoint, uh, that, that is the difference. The tabling would mean that they would have to, to work to get back on another agenda for a vote. Or a vote tonight with conditions would mean that, uh, they would continue going through that process with the code enforcement.
So, I mean, i- if you'd rather, I mean, I will draw my motion.
Well, I.
It's, it's fine with me, John, anyway. I just.
Yeah, I think it's.
Trying to move forward.
In, in my mind, six, one, half dozen of the other, except for it's better for the applicant. From a time.
Potentially.
So I will draw my motion.
What conditions should we?
I, I, go ahead Gavin, would you?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the best possible location for Robert and Jennifer Taylor, 800 Lakeside Drive, map 117, law 28, to be reconstructed in the same location. Uh, with conditions that uh, certified plot plan is provided to the code enforcement office. And a, uh, a revegetation plan is established. Any other conditions?
Do we have to say anything about the septic like you mentioned, Mike?
Nope.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Oh, boy.
Here's where I've heard them.
Yeah, I, um, I think it was sometime last fall. I, the last time I was here for a planning board meeting was uh, talking about the role of the board in relation to subdivision approvals. And essentially, the board is, is acting as a panel of judges. You, you have ordinances and you have a project and you judge the project by uh, what's on the book. And, uh, that is one primary role of the planning board. And tonight is really, uh, the other primary role of the board is to act as a, uh, group of policy advisors to suggest changes to the ordinance, uh, updates to the ordinance that would then go to the select board for their own consideration or review. Uh, and, uh, they're the ones who set the warrants for a town meeting. And those changes to the ordinance are, are eventually approved or not approved at a town meeting. So, over the last, um, this is a process that, that started last winter. And really, I think I put on hold, uh, around COVID, uh, and, and discussions around what should be on the town meeting. When do we have a town meeting? How is, you know, what format does that take place? So there was, uh, some work done at that time, last January, February, where the town looked at, uh, where the planning board, I should say, looked at, uh, changes to a few provisions of the ordinance that had to do with short-term rentals, the good neighbor provisions of the ordinance. Uh, and then some specific, uh, use updates around storage buildings, structures over the water, and timber harvesting. So, uh, included in your packet are changes that were discussed at that time. Um, they were reviewed, um, and the, they were reviewed by, uh, code enforcement at the time. They were assembled by, by the code office. The planning board discussed each of these over a period of at least one meeting or two. And, uh, the board voted at the end of the February, the second meeting in February 2020, to have this go to the select board to be included on the warrant for the June 2020 town meeting. These, these items were not warrant articles on the town meeting in 2020. And, uh, they've been brought forward again in the form that the board reviewed them last year for discussion tonight, uh, to make determinations on, uh, are these still relevant issues that should be, uh, forwarded for consideration at, uh, town meeting? for consideration at town meeting? So if, that, that's kind of the background, and if you want to walk through, the packet in mine is clipped, and there's multi-colored paper organized by each ordinance, thank you very much. The first one in the pack, it relates to short-term rentals, and I think that this was a, a area of concern as it relates to septic concerns for places on the water that were being rented on a weekly or weekend, month-long kind of basis. And specifically, the, the changes proposed establish a definition for a short-term rental unit as the rental of a legally existing single-family dwelling, whole-house rental for a duration of up to 60 days at a time. So if it's rented longer than that, for example, if you rent a home on an annual basis, that would not be covered as a short-term rental, but if you're renting it for the month of August, it would, or if you're renting it for a weekend, that also would, would be covered here. And then it establishes some performance standards around short-term rentals related to public safety, related to fire code. And again, I, I think that would also put the code enforcement department on notice around, you know, potentially overburdening septic systems and parking, those kinds of things that can happen when a home is, you know, a gathering place for a short-term rental. And Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to, like, talk about each ordinance in particular now that we've had a little overview, if people have thoughts on each ordinance, or walk through the, the whole pack and then kind of go back to the ones that seem the most pressing?
Start on the short-term rentals?
As Gavin would remember, if I may, when we had a public hearing, this was probably the most contentious change that we brought forward. And the reason why we brought this forward, so we used to have, you know, a lot of workshops. We had met with the fire marshal, state fire marshal, we had met with the fire chief, and it was all based on safety, because what the problem was, and it's not like this with every place, I mean, it's ridiculous, but there are places that don't have fire alarms, for example. There's no evacuation plan, you know, they give the guy, the person, the key and they come out for two weeks. There might not be proper exits, you know, to meet any kind of standing case there's a fire. You don't know if the ventilation for the heating system is properly done. It might be all right sometimes, but it might not be if it's got four feet of snow over it. So the fire marshal and the fire chief both thought that we ought to put this forward, and so did the code enforcement. The problem in this town is, as Mike said, we have a lot of water in this town, and camp rentals is pretty big. So we took the recommendation as a board of the fire, state fire marshal and the fire chief. Not that we wanted this to be a financial burden on the people that want to rent their camps, but if I had a camp, say on Great East Lake, on one of those 50-foot lots, and I had a septic system for one bedroom, and you rent out the camp to a family and they got six kids, it just doesn't work. And the fire chief and the code enforcement wanted to be able to have a permit, and I, I don't remember what the fee was, but I think it was a minimal fee, just so that the town knows that on these narrow roads, which we have over 100 private roads that are on these lakes and stuff, and a lot of them are 12 foot, 14 feet, it's hard to get safety equipment down through their fire trucks and different things. It was a safety thing, it was under recommendation of these three people, and that's why we put it forward, and, but there was a huge pushback on it. It really, I mean Gavin and I, we didn't even argue over this because we didn't have to because the people in the audience, the building was full. So I didn't have to promote any argument because it was coming.
Again, we felt like if we tried to put this forward to a referendum or a ballot vote, that without explanation at town meeting from someone from the planning board or the code enforcement officer, it would likely be voted down, and then we would miss the opportunity to put this thing through.
But we need to move forward.
Right.
You know, about a year and a half. So that's my take on it.
Yeah.
You agree with all that Gavin?
Yeah, no, I remember that fire extinguishers and egress windows were the biggest things people objected to, they didn't want to change the way their house looked.
Yeah.
You know, they didn't want to, oh, because we asked them to have the fire extinguishers on site. Hardwired, hardwired, not just...
Fire.
Ah, detectors, smoke detectors, hardwired.
Which is state law now.
Code requirement.
Right. But that was something, didn't, you know, they were complaining about having to rip out their drywall, but of course, we pointed out here where the electrical's on the outside, you know. So, I don't know, I mean, the, the board should definitely look these things over. I'm still in favor of putting this thing forward, I'm not sure I want to do it this year if we're not going to have a town meeting where we have the opportunity to speak, but...
Well, I want it Gavin, because we can't stop. I mean, we've taken a year off from this stuff, and this board needs to be proactive about stuff. And last night at the Sletman's meeting, it was said that we needed to make a decision tonight on moving this forward to the town meeting, if we're gonna do it. And I'd like just to move it forward, and we're still going to have a public hearing, I believe, where it's been so long.
I believe that they're, they're on the agenda tonight as discussion items, where the board has a chance to talk about it, ask questions, but I don't believe there was a vote intended to, to send these off. That could happen.
That isn't what they said last night, that's all.
Well, we, we could vote because we, we have to keep up with the schedule the select have set for us.
Right, so I was gonna say, it, you know, I don't know what the select board's schedule is. I don't think there's anything that would prevent you from voting to send these tonight, but you're not obligated to unless it's gonna miss a deadline to the warrants, for example.
Yeah, deadlines ASAP. Now is the issue.
Tomorrow, tonight basically, essentially.
Yeah. Little early, but...
So I...
Let's go on to the next one.
Right, so I was gonna say, I don't know if there's, if people want to get into the details or look at the, into the weeds of this, but this is where this product finished last year and, and went to the select board.
We went over these...
Yeah, a couple months ago.
Yeah, early in my term, we went over them. I mean, I've got notes on them from before. You know, on that one, I, I understand those, the people's concerns and why they'll raise a ruckus and they'll vote, but I, that cat, short-term rentals, that cat's out of the bag. I bet most times have, have...
Something.
Something addressing them. You know, God forbid something happens and the town decides not to do this, I think this is why I built my, I didn't stay at a Holiday Inn, I'm not a lawyer.
It's more public safety.
Yeah, it's public safety.
I think that's really the, it appears to be that was the lens that that permitting process was designed to address.
And septic systems too, I mean, half of them might be subpar at best, because they're on the front end, they're failing already.
So do you want to make a decision on each one individually?
I think we just go through them and then discuss them as a...
And if you want to vote on them as a, as a block at the end, you can, or if you want to go back based on the discussion, you certainly can do that too. The, the next one is the, the largest, the most paper of the, of the changes. This has to do with essentially moving the good neighbor provisions from the zoning ordinance, from the zoning section of the land use ordinance into site plan review section of the ordinance.
Why?
The reasoning, based on my recollection from a year ago, was essentially where they live in the ordinance today, in the zoning ordinance, they, they are not waivable or reviewable by the board, there are requirements, just like minimum lot size or fringe requirements, those kinds of things. If these standards are moved into the site plan section of the ordinance, the board would have a little latitude to consider reductions or waivers from the standards on a project-by-project basis. So that, that is certainly the biggest change. I, I don't believe there were any real substantive changes to the standards themselves, it was just more about giving the board some latitude to consider site-by-site, project-by-project requests when it comes to some of the standards. Most of these standards in the good neighbors section are what I would call kind of nuisance standards, they have to do with storage and landscaping and noise, they have to do with fencing, and those kinds of things. So, for example, if the, the way the ordinance is written today, when it comes to, I just had it, hours of operation, those are set. If there was a particular use that was less impactful from another use, or maybe had a different business model, or had other unique situations, maybe it was far away from the closest neighbor, the board would have some discretion to consider changes in operating hours from what is listed in the ordinance, as an example. And I, I believe that that was the, and I, and I'm confirming it now, that, that's really the, the change. There, there weren't any substantive changes to the standards themselves. I think that based on some timelines, last year, it was determined that, you know, maybe the town does need to have a conversation about standards and updating standards on a regular basis, kind of along the lines of the shoreline discussion we just had, but for the sake of expediency, at that time, the decision was made to leave the standards as they are, but just reorganize them where they live in the zoning document itself.
They also inserted the word "commercial," and so it doesn't apply to everything, just commercial operations.
Correct.
Why?
There, for example, a residential subdivision would be subject to good neighbor standards today, and, and the proposal, it would only apply to non-residential projects, so commercial buildings or commercial site plans.
So the board then thought it was okay for a residential subdivision to comply with good neighbors?
That was the discussion at the time?
This was the most confrontational...
Among the board.
...change within the board. It was, it was a three-to-two vote to put this thing forward.
As written with "commercial" on it?
Yes, it was a three-to-two vote, so it was a confrontational vote. Some members thought that these, you know, it's called the good neighbor policy, that these standards should be left to apply to everyone across the board, not just commercial uses, because we do have definitions for commercial, but when you talk about a residential subdivision, I mean, that's, it could be the person's commercial business, they put in subdivisions in multiple states, and they, so it's easy, I, you know, I don't know, it was, it was confrontational. You know, and you look at some of these things, a lot of them have to do with the senses, site, you know, is it too bright at the property line, does it smell too much at the property line, is it too loud at the property line? And I, we've been dealing with, you know, some of these issues in acting, explosions and things like this that are, you know, that the neighborhoods, like what happened, and they call the code enforcement office because it's obviously an infraction of this thing, you know, you're at your property line, you hear this thing, and like the code enforcement office would send them to, you know, it's like, what do they do with these complaints? And it seemed like it would be easier if they just made it commercial so that, you know, some of these residential issues wouldn't be plaguing the code enforcement office anymore. I feel like that was one of the driving factors to change it. There was other factors too.
No wonder it was controversial. So what you're saying was workload management for the code enforcement officer?
I definitely think it was part of it, but at the same time, what did they do with these complaints and this work when it came in? You know what I mean? There wasn't a very good way for them to enforce it, and then we, we had the discussion of enforceability. Some people feel like anything that's not enforceable should be changed in the ordinance, whereas other people feel like things that are included in the ordinance, maybe they're not 100% enforceable, but they're still in there, so you'll get a certain percentage of the population is going to follow them because it's in the ordinance. So it would still be beneficial even if it wasn't enforceable. I don't, I don't know. There were some, some things too in the, if you look in the last pages here, in the blue, you know, pages eight and nine, some of these things here, view protection, ridgeline protection, hillside development, shoreline development, these are things that apply to everyone, but then would only apply to commercial if we move this thing and...
Well, move that to word "commercial" only. You can move it, just take the word "commercial."
Well, it would still be under site plan review, so unless the applicant triggered site plan review, we wouldn't be held to this thing.
I, I think there, there's a couple things. Number one is, yes, I, I believe that including that word "commercial" excludes residential projects from the applicability, this wouldn't apply to, to residential projects. Also, by moving it to site plan, it would not, it wouldn't apply to commercial projects that are not going through site plan review. So if it's a small project that doesn't meet square footage, or doesn't meet other thresholds for site review, those standards wouldn't apply, because they'd be applicable to site plan only.
I don't, I'm not following it Gavin. So we have requirements to be good neighbors, and unless somebody comes in, has a project that reaches the level of approval, it's not what the paper is printed on? You know, I'm not trying to follow it.
The proposal to move those standards to site plan would mean that they'd only apply to projects going through for site plan review. And there's, there's a number of projects, like residential subdivisions that don't go through site plan review, they have their own standards, certainly. Single-family homes, other projects that would just come in for a building permit and not go through the site plan process, those, these standards would not apply to those projects.
I can see why this one was contentious.
Well, the thing is, John, and when you say, when, when, when I say these things are unenforceable... Well, the thing is, John, and when you say, when I say these things are unenforceable, that's not true. But it is to a certain extent. We used to have, way back 50 years ago, we had a blanket that was sent down to us by the state, and we had to follow this blanket. Okay? These are the rules in the state of Maine. Then the state realized that one blanket doesn't fit all places. And I'll use Acton and Shapley for an example. There's a lot more shoreline front in Acton than there is in Shapley. In fact, just Acton probably got more than any time around. So the state said that we had to make our own rules, because it's all individual. And that's when we created the planning board, back in the early '60s. You have things in here, for example, that just isn't common sense. Okay? One thing in here is if you have a dumpster on your property, and it's a residential piece of property that goes to a public way, you have to have a fence around your dumpster. Well, I have a dumpster 500 feet from the road. Why should I have to put a gravel, whatever, or pavement underneath my dumpster and put a fence around it? It doesn't make any sense.
Well, that's why you move it into the back and issue a waiver.
What I'm saying is, it doesn't matter. If your property goes on a town way, you have to put a fence around it, no matter where you put it.
But the purpose, Dennis, for moving it to the back, as I understood, if you were doing this now, right?
Right.
You were going to put a dumpster on, then the board would make a decision on your site plan, say, he's far enough back, he doesn't need a fence.
Right. But what I'm saying is, John, whatever's in this ordinance, we need to follow.
Right.
Not just from here on, but even right now.
I don't disagree.
So...
So why then?
Why should I have to move my dumpster? I've had a dumpster there for...
Make the driver come long before this was there.
Why should I have to put a fence around it? It doesn't make any sense.
If you put it...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think I'm picking up on the thread of the conversation. Number one, many of these standards, when you read them, were written expressly for commercial projects. And I think that there was discussion over the years about whether or not they should even apply to residential projects. But because they are in the zoning ordinance, they do, whether or not that was the original intent or not. And I think to your point, I heard, you know, again, if a dumpster's in the back, or if it's, you know, there's a bunch of trees between the dumpster and the road, why should you screen it? If someone were going to come in with a new project and it included a dumpster, it would have to be screened, because that is in the zoning ordinance. If it were going to be part of the site plan provisions, the board would have some leeway to use their discretion and consider a waiver from that requirement. It would still be a requirement, but if someone had a unique situation, whether it's setbacks or screening, whatever it is, natural screening, the board could say, for that particular provision, we're going to grant a waiver, which is technically not possible, and not the way to do it based on where it's located in the ordinance today.
I think that's what I tried to say, then.
Yeah. So, in other words, what you said...
That's the purpose for moving it, and I get that.
Correct.
But we have...
I just disagree with the same... Yeah. Well, that was the original intent, as I remember it, but my memory isn't that good anymore. But if you go into this good neighbor thing, I remember it was about two years ago, there were some people who come in and filed out some paperwork for complaints to the code enforcement of what was in their yacht. And in here, it says what you can have in your yacht. There was, and I remember the case Kenny talking about it, there was one yacht that had three old gas grills in the yacht. And they considered, the people said it was a gas grill junkyard in the front of the house, and they needed to remove it. And this is a true story. And that's the extremes when you have this in the ordinance, you know, it really is an extreme. And it cost Kenny, or cost us more time and money to have him do up the paperwork. And then they wouldn't do it. So then we had to hire a lawyer to send him a letter that they had a certain amount of time to do according to this ordinance. And, I don't know, if I'd known about it, I'd probably just offered to take the down and warn all things to the dump for him, and done with it, saved us a lot of money. But it's just extreme, John, some of it. You know, and that's my opinion.
Yeah, I got it.
You know what I mean? And everybody's got a right to their opinion. But the whole purpose was to keep this as a planning board thing, so we can still use it of the stuff that comes in front of us. But, I don't know, that's where I come from. And I was for taking it out, and Gavin was for leaving it in. And it's obviously, then we decided it's up to the people what they want to do. Because that's what it is really up to.
All right. So, yeah, just to continue the overview, understanding there may be more to talk about with each one of these. Storage buildings is a proposed new definition, a building or group of buildings containing separate individual and private storage spaces of varying sizes, not to exceed 5,000 square feet in total floor area per building, available for lease or rent for varying periods of time. And I think that, in addition to that definition, there's a line for that on the use table, where it would be not allowed in the village, critical rural, resource protection, or shoreline zones, but a conditional use in all other zones. A little more straightforward.
Yeah, and I think everyone was in favor of it. We just don't have anything to do with these sort of storage buildings. There's nothing in the ordinance. We need something in there.
Isn't this, wasn't there something in here about people not living in them?
Well, that was a concern, is that...
They said that they've had that problem in other towns.
Yeah.
Was there something in this change that was addressed that? I don't remember.
Nothing...
I don't think we pointed it out specifically, because it's, they'll be kind of redone, and we know they're not supposed to, everybody knows they're not supposed to live in there.
Well, no, but they do. That's the problem.
Well, the definition, the definition of that use does not include dwelling units or any of the, you know, cooking facilities or bathrooms that would make it a habitable dwelling unit. So if, in the event someone found someone camping out in one of these units, it would be a code issue.
Well, the fire marshal brought that to our attention, that's why.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be spelled out any, any more than it is in the ordinance. It would just be a violation of the, of the definition of the ordinance. The next one on the list is structures over water. And this was an attempt to, I think, separate temporary and permanent structures, with the idea being that today, a temporary pier, dock, wharf, bridge, or other structure or use that extends over or below the normal high water line or within a wetland, temporary structures of that kind would be permitted uses, allowed by a permit, as opposed to a little different process that would go through code review. And then the next page would, would talk about permanent piers. So there's added language around in the title for permanent piers, docks, and other shoreline And takes out some of the standards related to those structures, but makes it clear that those are for permanent and for temporary, it is a code review.
Ken told us a couple of months ago, this is actually a state recommendation to do this, get out of being dock police.
It may be a, another kind of updated best practice from the state. Maybe Mike can speak to that a little more.
It is. They actually, they actually kind of ward you away from permitting docks or regulating them at all, because it's, it's a difficult situation. You, I'll just, my last, last summer, I have a family that has a right-of-way, they own a peninsula. Two sisters got into a fight, and they both have brand-new ski nautiques and aluminum docks. Shoreline zoning, says one dock per parcel. Period. And that was their family dock, that was their family right-of-way. So we have multiple docks, multiple boats, multiple kids running around, and now there's a discrepancy between the sisters, and now everybody has to leave. It's, it's not a good thing. It's, leave the civil matters to the civil, to the civil courts and...
And plus the fact on the water, and this is one reason we really wanted to separate it, the town has no authority on the water.
No.
All we can, all we have authority over is what's attached to the land.
Correct.
And these people in the lakes, I remember Kenny showing the thing, I mean, you got a dock that's attached to the land, and then you go out there, and then there's a dock like this, and they've got their tents up, and they got their grills out there that's 35 feet from the shore. And then off that, they've got a swamp or something that's attached, and people are bouncing off that, whatever they're doing, I don't know. And, and it goes back to what we was talking about earlier, though, John. Forty hours a week, you can't address all these things. There just isn't time. And, and it's not managing your hours or whatever, it's more like, we've gone now with this town from a full-time code enforcement to, and a deputy code enforcement to a secretary, and now we've gone from a secretary to a code enforcement. Well, that 30-some-odd hours that other person was working, these two are making it up. And there's only so much time. And this is why the dock stuff, for example, how much time do you look around the lakes and check all the docks and put a sticker on them? And how often do you check them to make sure that it is a permitted dock? It's just, you know, it'd be a full-time job just doing that. And that's why we wanted to get out of this, be in the dock police.
I don't favor it.
And I think the last item on the list is similar kind of situation where the current status is town enforcement of timber harvesting, and transitioning that out of local to have that fall under state review and enforcement.
Yeah, we've been trying to do this for a few years, and...
They keep finding something.
They keep finding more references to timber harvesting, or forest management, or silviculture in the ordinance, and they want those removed as well.
Correct.
And this is really the most straightforward one of the changes. It's really just trying to get the rest of it out of there for them.
Yeah, they sent this back to us last year, the year before or something, said, get rid of it. They thought we had everything before that, but...
Right, right.
They found some more words.
So those are the changes that, again, these aren't new things, but there's new people in these chairs that might have questions or new information or perspectives that would shape what eventually would be going, well, I say eventually, but potentially as soon as tonight, going to the select board for their consideration.
I mean, I'd like to vote to move these forward to the selectmen, and we can have the debate, whether we support, you know, the changes or not.
Everybody gets a vote.
You know what I mean? At a town meeting, and the things that, like Gavin and I are on opposite sides about, him and I just can cancel all of each other's votes, so it's whoever we can get to help support us that will make the difference, how it turns out. But I would like to move this forward to the selectmen, because it does fit there. They put out a timeline of all the warrant articles and the schedule, and the reason why I know so much about it, because I have to follow, being on the chair of the Warren Finance Committee, and they just reviewed them again last night. And I'd like to get this moved forward, so we can get it behind us.
And one second.
I don't think that was a motion, but I did have, I had one other idea as opposed to putting the five forward or not putting it forward, was to, to put these three simpler changes forward that are not confrontational within the board or the community, just to get these things done.
You don't want to put the short-term rental in?
Well, that, if we go to town meeting, we have a town meeting where there's actually people there discussing it, I absolutely want to put this thing forward. But if we're going to put it on to just a referendum vote, I'm concerned it'll get turned down, and we'll lose our opportunity to make this change to the zoning ordinance.
Well, the problem is with that, Gavin, that we're not going to know the selectmen's decision on that until possibly May.
Right, well, we don't know, so I'm just putting it out there. I mean, that's, that's another option that we could do, as opposed to five or nothing. I mean, I'm in, I'm in favor of putting these things forward, but we, you know...
I think that what you're talking about is, you know, this board does not need to vote on all five together. You can vote on them individually if you wanted to. I certainly understand considerations about how and when these things go to the community, but I think that the role of the board here is to make sure that the select board has the policies that are coming out of this group, and then they can handle the logistics of whether it's a vote or a more traditional-looking town meeting. I certainly understand it, but I, you know, I think just to, if, if there's consensus on the board about this, or however the vote turns out, that, you know, that's, that's information that the select board can use.
And it's a chance either way from what...
Oh, yeah, it's up to the people.
Right.
I mean, that's the bottom line. And so I'm going to make a motion to move these five zoning changes forward to the selectmen.
As written?
As written.
Can I have a second?
I mean, I just hate to wait. I mean, we, we put this off a whole year, in fairness to everybody that did all that work, and it was a lot of hours of work for the subcommittee at the workshops and stuff to get all this stuff ready. And if the facts haven't changed, and all we're doing by doing this is giving the people the opportunity to decide what they want to do, that's all we're doing.
Dennis, I understand the process. I just disagree with the word "commercial." So you could put, and I, I agree, I think we should the short-term rental forward, and, you know, we potentially can have some written document to go with it, to, you know, advocate for it. I mean, who knows how that's going to work. But I just disagree with that one, so...
Yeah, I mean, I, maybe we should vote on them individually, because, I mean, my opinion on the good neighbor policy hasn't changed. I still feel like it does apply to everything in the town, not just commercial, but, I don't know, just, you're voting tonight, what do you, what do you think, Pat?
I was just wondering if you could put them in both places, one to apply for commercial and the other to apply for the other, the residential.
Residential, like?
Like where it is now, and take out the word "commercial," something to that effect, is that possible? So... Like where it is now, and take out the word "commercial," something to that effect, is that possible? So, you satisfy both?
Well, I think the problem with where it is now is we don't have latitude, is the way I understood it, to waive a certain, one of the aspects of it, which was part of the rationale for moving it into the back, which I didn't understand until tonight. I think that's good rationale. I just, as Gavin said, I think it should apply to the town, not just commercial.
Right, I mean, I'm more than willing to vote of the committee to take the word "commercial" out of it.
It'd still be in the site plan review, so it would still not apply to a lot of projects where it would have applied before. You know, because you have these sort of issues with, where people have, you know, right now, somebody has a bright light on the property line. You know, there is something in the ordinance for the neighbor to say, you know, to back them up and say, you know, "Could you please direct that downward?" Whereas if we move this to just site plan review, there's no say in... I mean, I don't know, it's... We went over it a lot.
We did, I mean, we beat it to death. I just think we ought to put it to the people. And if you want, the board wants a change tonight that we do away with the word "commercial" and that, I'm fine with that too. I just, I'm telling you, it was a lot of hours. And we've got to move forward. You know, we haven't done anything for a year and a half. And we have to move forward because we still have a lot of things, like Mike brought up tonight, that we need to address. We've got to be proactive. That's what we're supposed to be, as far as I'm concerned, anyway. And for the last six months, we've been more reactive. And that's not positive for the town to act in. You know, that's my thoughts.
Mike, what do you think about the good neighbor policy? Do you have a good neighbor policy in Limerick?
Yeah, it's called, call the code enforcement office. No, um...
Right, and then what do you think?
I think, I think that this is a, this is a great portion of your, of your ordinance. It may be a little, it may be a little strong, just to only, only limit it to review during site plan review. Because it does give me the impression, just by reading through it, that a lot of, a lot of the substance in here is actually directed towards the actual good neighbor portion. But then you have things like decimal, it's really, it's really thorough. You know, I think maybe, my opinion, personal opinion, would be to vote on these four and then maybe take a little more time to dissect this down. And maybe you want to keep some of, keep some of the exterior lighting, the noise, the buffers, things like that. Maybe you want to keep a portion of that in the ordinance and then use this as a template for something, for a site plan review a little later down the road as far as the decimal amounts. And because, once you get into regulating some of this, it's going to be, it's going to be relatively costly to the town. You know, you're going to have to hire somebody in and take a noise analysis, and it's, it's... There's some things in there that are going to be substantive, and you're going to need some professional guidance on certain criteria. But the premise, the premise of it with the good, with the good neighbor portion and the lightings and the general neighbor disturbance type of things is great as well.
And as the town gets more developed, the houses are getting closer together. It's almost like the good neighbor policy becomes more important because we used to have, everyone had their five acres, they couldn't see the neighbor, you know, if you're, you know... And now, it's almost more pertinent because we're living closer together. So, it's hard to, I don't know, I struggle with what to do with this.
I guess what I'm saying, Gavin, really, is that I agree with a lot of the stuff that's in there. But any of this stuff that you have, if it's not enforceable, because we don't have the manpower or the equipment or the education to enforce it, what's the point in having it there?
Well, I think that if you have a squabble between two neighbors, one neighbor says your lights are too bright, the other one says, "No, they're not." That neighbor could hire someone to see how many foot candles it is at the property line. And then, if it was too many, they could say, "Well, this is in the zoning ordinance." You know, they can, they could do that work and be backed up by the town. Why the town has to go and measure the foot candles at the property line doesn't make sense.
Because you have to go through code enforcement if it's a, if it's a violation. Who do you go to?
We can simplify it.
I wanted to chime in to avoid the situation where we had a couple conversations going at once. I think that there's a lot of issues, and you guys are definitely hitting it on the head. If it's in the code, then it's a code officer issue. And are people going to call the code office because the neighbors are having a loud party or their floodlight is shining into the yard? They're probably, you know, if they, you know, talk to their neighbor and it can't be addressed, they're probably going to call the police, especially if it's like 10 or 12 o'clock at night. So, there's that issue. Is it a town code issue? Or is it a, you know, nuisance or public safety thing that law enforcement would become involved in? So, that's, that's one thing. The other thing is kind of a question or clarification. Christina has brought to our attention on this side of the table that the select board, when they were asking for some, some movement on this tonight, that they were really trying to get a sense of how many warrant articles to reserve. And not necessarily looking for a board recommendation on each of these, but, you know, would the planning board be looking to advance three or four or five of these at this point as opposed to nailing each one of these down in its entirety? So, there is a possibility to continue this discussion, but it did sound like, and maybe Dennis, you can clarify based on your recollection, that they really wanted to get a sense between now and the next meeting of, you know, are there going to be three ordinance changes to consider, or four or five? And then, it would be possible to schedule a public hearing and vote on these at the, at the next meeting. But just kind of for their information to help them set warrants, just how many would we potentially be sending out of the planning board back to the select board? So, you know, you could conservatively say five, and then if there only ends up being three or four, that's, that's one thing, right?
They'll save some paper.
Does that jive with your recollection? I think that certainly seemed like a pretty clear...
Well, they have to be submitted, the final, February, end of February, 28th.
Okay, that has to be submitted on the 20th.
Right, they have to be officially, is the final version. This is what you guys, if you choose, do a print on the warrant, so...
Right, so the next planning board meeting is two weeks from tonight, on the 18th.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me. If you guys want to just put that good neighbor thing aside and work on it some more as we move forward, and just put the other four forward, and then we're just done with it.
Well, I...
I'm fine with that too.
Based on what I just heard, we could say five. And if we don't come to agreement on, or, you know, a solution for the good neighbor, it'll end up being four.
Or if you send all five, and then they only decide to put three or four on, that's their prerogative as well.
I'm just concerned, Ben, and I don't, is scheduling the public here. Okay, because we have, I assume we should have a public hearing again.
February 18th?
Yeah, public hearing, plenty of time.
Is that enough notice?
Yeah, yeah, because it has to be somewhat close to the day of voting. We can't, we don't want to do it months ahead of time. Remember, we ran into this before. We did the hearing in like February, but then we had to do it again because it had to be about 30 days before the vote, so that people were informed. But it wasn't last minute, but it wasn't way ahead of time.
I don't remember what the statute is, you know what that is, Mike, off the top of your head.
Oh, sorry, I was...
But there's something there, and I forget what it is, but...
I think we have plenty of time to deal with the hearing, regardless.
As long as the selectmen will let us, give this to us and, you know, I don't know. I'm just talking, I shouldn't, you know, shut up. Talk all night, people need to tell me. Be quiet.
Make a motion.
Make a motion that Dennis doesn't talk anymore tonight. Can I get a second on that?
Can we do that?
No.
No.
So, I'll make a motion that we, see, I can't help myself. I'm sorry.
You want to make a motion to send five through? And like John stated, if we only send four through, we're safe. That we, you know, less paperwork on their end than our end.
We can withdraw it, right?
Yeah. And then...
I would hope.
Maybe next meeting we can do a hearing.
Then I can sit, we can have a public hearing on the February 18th on the next meeting as well.
That's good.
Is that, I don't, it's not gonna make that, it has to be posted twice in the newspaper.
No, we don't want to do a hearing yet. We wait, it's, I have to look it up in the zoning ordinance, but...
But I know it has to be...
It's an X amount of time before...
It has to be twice in the newspaper, I know that.
Yeah.
And usually, you have to have those things all in on Friday or something, as on the board.
I can get it down if I put it in tomorrow.
It's up to you guys, where you guys want to do it.
Should we agree to put five through?
Yep.
Should we do a public hearing on the 18th, that we can get it done?
I don't know.
Well, we'll have to, just, we did this last year. We did one in February. We'll have to do another one about 30 days before the town vote. Just because otherwise, it's like we didn't inform the town because it was so far ahead of time. Just like we can't just use the public hearing we had for these last year. It's outdated, we have to be, I forget where it is in the ordinance, I can find it. I don't mind if we do two, though. More public hearings, the better, I'm happy with that.
I think we'll wait, I'd like to wait till the next meeting and make a decision. And give everybody a chance, Christina and Mike and anybody else, to make sure we're covering our bases.
I'll defer to Christina, but the ordinance seems to state that it needs to be advertised twice, and the first one has to be at least 12 days ahead. So, I think, you know, I would recommend leaving it to staff. If the, if the planning board would like to schedule a public hearing, it'll be scheduled as soon as possible. It could be at the next meeting.
I thought somebody wants me to...
Has the date for the town meeting been set? Or there's, it sounds like there's still some discussion about...
Soon. They don't know what they're doing yet. You're not going to know. You just don't know.
So, I think that, you know, as long as this board is making a good faith effort to get the select board the information they need as timely as possible, I think that's, you know, what, what we can do here, so...
So, I'll go back to my original motion, I guess, that we move these five documents to the board of selectmen.
Anyone want a second?
How about four documents to the selectmen?
Well, how about what, what I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, Christina and Ben, what they need to know soon, like after tonight, was how many we're going to move forward. I think we can safely say we intend to move five. Not move the actual documents, because on one of them, I think four are fine to give them the actual documents. But one of them, at least personally, I think requires a little more work on our part.
Well, the problem with that, John, is because every one of these are different. And you take, like, the good neighbor policy. When, say, if they're going to have to do a written ballot, all right, that's 10 pages or whatever, all right? If, then if we're not going to do that one, if that's 10 pages less they have to print off, and one of the issues was last year, there was an awful lot of pages to print off. That was one of the things that was said.
Now, this thing is pretty true.
And I'm just saying, I don't care what the board wants to do here tonight. If you want to move three forward, four forward, five forward, I don't understand. I think you'd always be able to withdraw one if you said to the selectmen, like, geez, you know, we need to revisit this, and like to go with that.
But my point is, why do we have to do the documents as written? I'm hearing, all they want is the number, not the actual document. If that's not true, and you want to then motion to move them as written, okay, well, we'll vote accordingly. But I heard as sort of a way ahead was to give them the number, and then we had time, at least the next meeting, to discuss the one we have some concerns about.
All I can say is what I understood at the selectmen's meeting last night. That's all I can tell you.
What John's saying is right. We can move five, per se, we're going to move the five forwards. We can always withdraw, say, the good neighbor one to...
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I think we're all saying the same thing, but it may be a matter of clarifying your, your motion, Dennis, about, you know, are you saying that your motion is for the select board to reserve five warrant articles for ordinances coming out of the planning board? Or are you saying that you want to submit these five as written to the planning, to the select board tonight?
No, I want to make a motion that we move our intentions to the selectmen. And then at the, end of February, when they want the final document, has to be submitted. That's my motion.
And it, and I...
Is that all right, John? Does that cover it? Submit our intentions.
Yeah, we intend to submit.
And this is what it is. This is the five we're submitting. So that they, so that they can write, they can start piecing together the warrant. You know, this is what the, the selectmen make all these decisions, you know, we don't. And because the warrant says, I mean, and how they do it is, and the timeframe says, I mean...
That clarification, I think, is much closer to what John was saying. You know, about giving some notice about the potential number of warrant articles and understanding that there's going to be a public hearing scheduled at this level to parse through the exact wording before it goes to the select board.
I mean, we never used to do it this early, you know that. You know, we didn't do it like five months before town meeting. I mean, everything was whatever, close to the town meeting. But the selectmen just wanted to decide the schedule. I mean, they're the ones that, it's their schedule. And I just don't want to see things put off for another year.
Fair enough.
So, would somebody second that one?
Second, Dennis.
Anybody?
Please.
I feel like I'm at a town meeting, I'm sitting there all by myself.
There's a lot of words here. I wouldn't know what I was seconding. Are we seconding what Ben said?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll second.
Thank you, John. We can sit next to each other next meeting again.
All in favor? Of what Ben says? You got that, right, Christina?
The good thing she's good, you know what, John? She does look good to follow me around with my words.
Motion to adjourn?
I'm not saying anymore.
A second.
You need a second. John's second.